Good morning. My name is Kathleen Casey and I chair the Financial Accounting Foundation. This is the first in-person meeting we have held since February 2020, and I'd like to take a moment to thank my fellow trustees who have traveled to attend this meeting, as well as the trustees who are unable to attend in person and are participating with us remotely. I'd also like to thank those on the FAF staff who have helped make this first hybrid meeting possible. And of course, I'd also like to welcome our stakeholders tuning into today's meeting. Today, we will hear reports from the FASB Chair, the GASB Chair, the FAF Executive Director, and the FAF Treasurer. We will also hear reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. We will also receive a report from our Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. But before we get to these reports, I'm very pleased to announce some important appointments. The FAF trustees have reappointed Marcia Hunt to the FASB for a second five-year term, which will begin on July 1st of next year. Since joining the board in 2017, Marcia has brought the important perspective of financial statement preparer and broad knowledge of financial accounting and reporting issues facing large public companies to the board's discussions. She can view issues from a variety of perspectives and has a strong commitment to develop standards that provide investors and other financial statement users with better information. The trustees have appointed a new member of the GASB as well, Dr. Jacqueline L. Rec. Jackie is an Associate Dean of Financial Management and Academic Affairs and the James E. Rooks and C. Ellis Rooks Distinguished Professor of Accounting at MoMA College of Business at University of South Florida. She will fill the vacancy left by Jim Brown, whose final term in the GASB ends next June. In addition, the trustees have reappointed Christopher Knight to serve a second five-year term on the GASB. Mr. Knight's first term began in July of 2017, and he currently serves as Delaware's Deputy Secretary of State and Director of the State's Division of Corporations. To the FASAC, the board has reappointed Mike Morrow to serve a second two-year term as Chair. He became a member of the FASAC in 2019 and was appointed to his first term in 2020. His experience spans a broad spectrum of industries, having advised companies involved with manufacturing, technology, financial services, and consumer products. Mike has proven to be an effective advisor as the FASAC fulfills its mission to bring diverse perspectives and insights to the standard-setting process. In addition, the trustees have appointed Paul Hensley to a three-year term on the Private Company Council to begin January 1, 2022. Paul's background covers a wide range of industries, including distribution, manufacturing, restaurants, pharmaceuticals, and waste services. His broad scope of experience will be beneficial to the PCC as they advise the FASB on private company matters. Paul will replace Tim Kurt on the council, whose final term ends in December. Also this morning, I'm very pleased that the FAF-boarded trustees voted to appoint four new trustees who will begin their five-year terms on January 1, 2022. The trustees are Manju Benariwala, Treasurer of the Commonwealth of Virginia; Edward Goldthorpe, Chairman and Chief Executive Officer of Portman Ridge Finance Corporation; W. Brian Lewis, Vice President and Chief Investment Officer for United States Steel Corporation; and Diane Norton, the former Partner and Director of Fixed Income for Wellington Management Company. Manju will serve as a governmental trustee, and Ted, Brian, and Diane will serve as at-large trustees. They will succeed current trustees Sue Carter, Tony Dowd, and Eloise Foster. Eloise's departure from the board creates a vacancy for someone to serve as our Secretary and Treasurer, and I'm delighted to announce that trustee David Lillard has agreed to take on these FAF roles. So I want to thank David for taking on these leadership positions. I would also officially like to welcome all new appointees. I will take a moment later in this meeting to thank those who will be completing their service. So with that, what I'd like to do now is move on to our regular agenda. And the first item of business is to approve the minutes from the board's August 24 meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much. So we will now move to reports from the FASB, FASAC, GASB, and GASAC, and we'll start with Rich.
Good morning, Kathy. Thank you. My report appears on Master Pages 83 through 103 in your materials. I would just start by noting it continues to be a busy time here at the FASB, but we're very fortunate to have a very engaged group of stakeholders and staff that help us fulfill our mission. I'd like to highlight three items that are in my report. The first is about our agenda outreach. We issued the invitation to comment on agenda outreach in June of this year, and the comment period closed in September. I'm very happy to report that we've had over 500 responses to our invitation to comment. And I do want to thank all of our stakeholders for participating in that outreach effort. But we're not done. Starting in December, our staff will be bringing -- excuse me. Starting in December, our staff will start to bring that information back to our board so that we can make decisions about what we should be working on. We will also use that information to help inform us as to items on our current agenda, what should be our priorities overall. So I'm looking forward to that discussion. I'm also looking forward to our stakeholders' continued participation in that process as we move forward. I'd next like to turn to our post-implementation review. As the board is aware, we have three projects that we are reviewing as part of our post-implementation review. Those are more recently issued standards related to revenue recognition, leasing, and our expected credit loss model. In addition to informing us as to potential improvements to the standard-setting process, a key part of the post-implementation review is what immediate standard-setting changes do we need to make? When it comes to our expected credit loss model, we have recently added projects to our agenda related to troubled debt restructurings and their accounting by lenders, as well as the accounting for acquired loans. We've also accelerated the progress on our vintage disclosure project. We will be issuing an ED on both TDR and vintage disclosures in the fourth quarter of this year. When we move to leasing, we issued final standards on lessor accounting for leases with variable rentals. We also issued final guidance regarding establishing a discount rate for non-public lessees. And finally, moving to revenue recognition, we issued a final standard on revenue acquired in a business combination. All of these standards and all of these proposals have been added to our agenda as a result of the direct outreach in the post-implementation review, and I think it signifies the continuous improvement efforts that we are committed to as part of that post-implementation review. I'd also tell you that we've learned certain things from a higher-level perspective about our process, and that's an important byproduct of the post-implementation review. And that is to start looking at scoping business combinations, interaction with any standard we set, as well as transition as areas that may require particular focus of our board as we look at major standards. Finally, last but not least, I'd like to turn to our ongoing agenda. We continue to make significant progress on our existing agenda. We have finalized and will be issuing two chapters of our ongoing project on the conceptual framework. The PCC is completed, and we have issued a final standard related to share-based payments. And we expect to issue in the fourth quarter, final standards on government grant disclosures and supplier finance disclosures. Two items which I will mention were at the top of the list of our investor stakeholders. And finally, we will be issuing an ED, or we just recently issued an ED on interim disclosures. And we've also completed deliberations on our portfolio hedging standard. So as you can see, we accomplished quite a bit in this quarter. In short, I will tell you, we had a busy 2020, '21, but we've laid a strong foundation for 2022. With that, Kathy, back to you, are any questions?
Yeah, thank you very much, Rich. Do we have questions for Rich? Mary?
So, Rich, you mentioned the Agenda Consultation Project. You got 500 comments. Some of them were more expansive than others, and I think you'd make note that there's a large number of relatively short-focused answers on some topics. How did the board interpret the more expansive letters versus the smaller ones, and what kind of feedback do you think overall you got from the Agenda Consultation process?
Sure. First off, Mary, I would say I think that I share my fellow board members' views that we were very happy with the response we got. There is a difference between a simple response sometimes and someone explaining their position a little more so. But we don't add projects to our agenda based on the popularity of the responses, but it's really more getting behind those responses and understanding what we can do to improve financial accounting and reporting. So I'll tell you, that's part of the reason why we waited till December to start bringing this back to the board is because our staff has been going through all of those responses on a very careful basis, accumulating the information so they can share it with our board so that we can make meaningful decisions.
Tim?
Thank you, Kathy. Rich, congratulations on a successful and busy quarter. I have a question, and it's very much in flight, so just looking for your current thinking, so to speak, with the news of the IFRS Foundation, creation of the International Sustainability Standards Board. How do you see us playing with them, how fitting together in any way, working together? What do you see as the future there?
Thanks. Great question. As the trustees know, we have a very close working relationship with the ISP focused on financial accounting and reporting, and that's our mission and that's what we're focused on. That being said, we certainly will watch the international developments carefully. We put out an educational paper a little earlier this year to help explain to people that there are some aspects of ESG, environmental matters, for example, that are already reflected in our standards, and we intend to stay focused on the financial accounting and reporting, but being informed by developments around the world.
Thanks, Rich.
Other questions for Rich? Lynette?
Rich, I know there's been a lot of focus this year on your investor stakeholders and that you recently put out a report in August on your investor outreach report. I wondered if you had gotten any particular feedback around that report or an acknowledgement of all the work that FASB does with the investor community?
Sure. Lynette, thank you. And part of our reasoning for putting out that report was to increase transparency about the work that we do and the significant involvement investors have in all facets of our standard setting. Some of the reaction I got was people were, wow, I didn't realize you did all of that. And I think that was partially -- that was helpful, because to have a dialogue on stakeholder output, I think it's important that we start with the facts and where we are. And that served as a great starting point for us to continue that dialogue. And I will tell you, I think it's already paying dividends when I look at our invitation to comment and I see the investor participation in sending us comment letters. It's up significantly. So I think we're making good progress there, and I think part of it is education and transparency.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Other questions? Rich? Rick?
Rich, a less technical question, because we're pretty excited to all be here and see each other in person, other than on the screen. Have you guys started meeting in person yet as a board?
Yes, we have. And in fact, we're using the same technology. We've had, I think it's, we'll be having a board meeting, in fact, tomorrow, again in person. So over the last month, we've been holding all of our board meetings in person, and I think I do speak on behalf of my fellow board members, we are happy to be able to turn to the side and see each other, not just stare straight ahead. So it's been terrific.
Other questions? Mary? For Robin.
Hi, Rich. Again, I also commend all the success and hard work during a challenging year. I was curious about the minimum corporate tax proposal that's based on book income created. I'm curious as to what type of challenges or opportunities that might present for the FASB as you think about your agenda.
Right. Now, Robin, great question. It's interesting, when we think about the purpose of our financial accounting and reporting standards, they're for capital allocation, and that's their sole purpose. So we don't have other objectives in mind. And when you think about some of the pressure that we've received on our financial accounting results, for example, on our expected credit loss model, it's often not been about the GAAP outcome, but how it's used by the regulators as they set regulatory capital. So if you think about using financial accounting and reporting to set tax revenue, that certainly has certain public policy aspects. And that would certainly, you could see situations where that could bring added pressure to decisions that are primarily designed around providing the best information for individuals, for investors, for unions to make investment decisions, to instead be focused on raising revenue and/or incentivizing certain activity through, let's call it, tax incentives. So it would be an additional pressure, there's no doubt, on our mission and what we do.
Thank you, Rich. Are there any additional questions for Rich? Mary? One more?
Since I have the opportunity. You noted in your report that you're going to finish two chapters of the conceptual framework, so congratulations. I know these are big undertakings. What's next? You going to give it a rest for a while, or is there more parts of the framework that need to be addressed, or what's the plan?
So I think it's fair to say that may not be a completed volume, but there are certain additional items that our team will be bringing back to our board with suggestions on how we could pursue those for our board to make decisions on whether or not to add those to our agenda at this point in time. Keeping in mind, there's lots of great things we can work on, as we set our agenda, and it comes down, at the end of the day, to a matter of prioritization, not just that they're good projects. So I think that's the context that we'll hear about, those future ideas on the concept statements.
Thanks very much, Rich. Appreciate your report. Now, we're going to move now to Mike. Mike Morrow, who's the Chair of the FASAC, for his report. Mike?
Thank you. It's nice to be with you today. My report could be found on page 99 in your materials, or will cover recent activities through the September meeting and some upcoming activities as well. The September FASAC meeting, the first topic, following on Rich's point there, was the discussion of the FASB's investor outreach process. And I think, similar to the comment that you made, Rich, I think the members were informed to some degree about the extent and effectiveness of some of the outreach opportunities. And they did provide observations and suggestions about how the FASB can further engage with investors and enhance those educational efforts. I think in general, we commended the outreach efforts, encouraged the FASB to continue to be proactive, especially in educational efforts related to the implementation of new standards, and offered some suggestions to make investor outreach more accessible, encourage user engagement, and offered mechanisms to engage with additional financial statement groups. And we suggested that the FASB increase their transparency about the feedback received from different types of users and how the board considers those views in the decision-making process. I thought it was a good exchange of ideas in that topic. The second topic was on financial performance reporting, specifically disaggregation of performance information. And this was part one of what's going to be two sessions on this topic. So the first part was aimed more at providing a history and background of this project and the initial feedback that's been received about income statement disaggregation. The investors on the committee expressed continued support for the project and stated they would be willing to sacrifice some detail on disaggregation to maintain consistency and comparability among companies. And then some council members noted a broad framework could provide flexibility for preparers and be more cost-beneficial than a rules-based approach. And some preparers also expressed cost concerns and questioned whether additional disaggregation is needed, given a lack of inquiries that they're receiving from their investors. As to our upcoming meeting, which is going to be on December 2nd, we anticipate the topics will be the continued discussion of financial performance reporting, disaggregation, to discuss the feedback that's been received as part of the invitation to comment, agenda consult, and seek council members' input about the path forward. And then we'll also be focusing in detail on the agenda consult and what's come out of that in the initial stages, and I think that'll help inform us in terms of what we continue to focus on in the future. We've also updated our long-term potential FASAC topics for '21 and '22, which is on Master Page 1 of 3 in the materials. We welcome any input you have on this or other topics that you think would be appropriate for FASAC to consider in the future. And finally, we've put forward a slate of candidates for vacancies for terms beginning January '22, and pending the trustees' approval, expect to announce those members in the oncoming weeks. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for your leadership and your willingness to continue to serve as Chair.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Are there questions for Mike? Rick?
Mike, the FASAC has a pretty broad membership. I mean, there's a lot of you. And I know before you've mentioned to me how you engage the different stakeholders to participate, and I found that interesting. Could you describe a little bit, how do you get, like, the users to participate and to feel that they can have a voice in that? I think that's interesting.
I think it's an interesting point. We always want to make sure, especially on the more complex technical areas, right? There's always a risk that preparers or professionals who are maybe engaged in the detailed accounting much more on a day-to-day basis can overwhelm the discussion, if you will, with some of the technical details involved. So we've tried some things with the users, obviously to encourage their views, sometimes just shifting around the agenda, who we ask to speak first, talking to people before the meeting and saying, we'd really like your point of view on this, the education example that I gave on some more complex topics. So breaking things into smaller pieces, maybe over one or two meetings, so that users can get up to speed with what the history of the technical issue might be, and there's a level playing field in terms of the discussion. So it's all small pieces that hopefully add up and provide for a robust dialogue from the users, and I feel we've had some success in that regard.
Tim?
Thank you, Kathy. Mike, first, congratulations on your reappointment. Well-deserved and doing great service. Thank you. And, you know, I really have more of a comment than a question. I want to compliment FASAC for your focus on providing assistance on the investor outreach process, which is obviously a focus for us here, and I think with the large base, as Rick talked about, you're able to give, you know, when I read your report, I thought really meaningful, sort of specific, input on actions that the boards can take in terms of seeking investor outreach. I really just want to thank you for that and encourage that.
Thank you. It'll continue to be a point of focus. So thank you for that.
Other questions or comments for Mike? No? Thank you again, Mike. We're going to move to Joel, Chair of the GASB. Joel?
Thanks, Kathy. And it's great to see everybody, both in person and on the screen. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to talk about what we have going on at the GASB. My report does start on Master Page 104. I'll hit the highlights. Wouldn't be a GASB update if we didn't talk about the Big Three. And so for the first two of the Big Three, the financial reporting model and the revenue and expense recognition projects, both came off a very long 10-month due process period that ended in the second quarter, and so the board began redeliberations or deliberations on both of those comprehensive projects in the third quarter, and we worked through some issues and will continue to do so. The third of our Big Three is our disclosure framework, concept statement project. That, at the end of the second quarter, we issued a re-exposure draft on that proposal. The comment period was over 90 days, so it spanned the entirety of the third quarter, but we did have the comment period end early fourth quarter, and we'll begin redeliberations on that project this month. Additionally, we had three exposure drafts, which had comment periods end during the third quarter, the renaming of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, an accounting changes and error corrections project, and an omnibus project. On the renaming project, that was renaming a report that we've had in our literature for a long time because of an issue that came to our attention, that the acronym was an offensive racial term. And so we wanted to, you know, do the right thing, and so we undertook a project, and the result was renaming that report by flipping the first two words, so now it will be called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or the ACFR. The third quarter saw that project really come to fruition with the actual issuance of a standard very early in the beginning of the fourth quarter for GASB 98. So long with the ACFR. The accounting changes project I'll highlight because on that project, we actually piloted a couple of new ways of engaging with our stakeholders. One was a short video series directed at users, identifying a couple of aspects they might be interested in in that exposure draft, as well as the use, for the first time for us, of an electronic input form to make it easier for people to provide input into that project as opposed to the traditional comment letter, although we certainly receive and continue to receive those. Finally, I'll talk about, we continue to monitor for pandemic-related issues, in particular, governments continuing to receive significant federal funds. Our decisions so far have been that the accounting guidance that we've issued last year related to the CARES Act continues to be good enough for people. They seem to have the accounting guidance that they need to account for and recognize revenue related to the stimulus funding. Their issues tend to surround being sure they spend it, compliance and compliance with the regulations, which is a more issue for the federal government, not necessarily ours. So that's a high-level summary of what we've been working on this quarter. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Joel. Do we have questions for Joel? Eloise?
Thank you, Joel, for your report. I know that you and one of your team members had an opportunity to meet with the group that calls itself the Truth in Advertising, or Truth in Accounting. Can you just give us an update on those discussions and what do you see in terms of interactions with that group going forward?
Sure. We did. Alan Skelton, our Director of Research Technical Activities, and I did go into Chicago and meet with Truth in Accounting. They had been a very vocal opponent to the exposure draft for the financial reporting model, in particular, the accounting for governmental funds. They felt it should be a long-term perspective instead of the short term, but we went and met with them. They were very appreciative that we came and met with them. They participated in public hearings. We'd heard the comment letters, but we really wanted to engage with them because the board had tentatively made a decision to retain that short-term perspective. So they were appreciative. You know, we tried to dialogue with them. They still feel the way they feel, but we really tried to focus the discussion on, well, okay, we have that long-term perspective in the government-wide statements, which exist and aren't changing. How do we get people? How do we educate people? How do we direct people to use all of the statements that are required under GAAP? And they agreed to kind of work with us and gave us some feedback of how we might incorporate some of that into the exposure draft. So in the end, I think they appreciated the dialogue, and we ended in a good place, even if they still don't necessarily agree with the overall conclusion we reached.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions for Joel? Mary?
So Joel, I know you and Rich talked together about the projects that both boards are working on to try to coordinate to some extent, or at least know what the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. If FASB just had this big Agenda Consultation project, well, outreach, got a lot of feedback. Have you had a chance to go through that? You think the GASB might learn something from some of the input that the FASB received on their Agenda Consultation?
It is something we talked to the FASB about and paid attention to. In a way, yes, and in a way, no. Our constituency is different. Some of the same things that I know that they heard, we have heard too. And so we didn't go through a formal process, but we certainly have been, you know, engaging with stakeholders, hearing the issues through the GASAC prioritization. We hear about the projects that are important. So, you know, hearing the emerging issues that come from their world, hearing them in our world too, kind of helps inform that these are probably important issues that we need to consider tackling as we look at our agenda moving forward as well. So it is informative.
Other questions? Joel, can you just talk a little bit? I know that you had the piloted online stakeholder outreach effort. Can you talk a little bit about the results of that and how you see potentially continuing that online effort?
Absolutely. Excited to. Yeah, the electronic input form in particular, we received 30 comment letters, but then we saved, in addition to that, eight respondents that used the input form, which for us, we considered to be a success, given the project, you know, accounting changes, prior period adjustments, maybe not the most controversial or widespread interest in that topic. So we thought the eight responses was good, especially the first time we were using it. We actually rolled it out a little late in the exposure draft period, so we thought that was very successful. The commenters that used it gave us feedback on it and said that they really appreciated us trying new ways. They appreciated the ease with which they could provide the feedback in that way. And so it is something we plan to learn some lessons from, improve on a little bit, and use again in our probably next exposure draft on a project that might have a little bit more interest, and that's our Risk and Uncertainties Project, which we're anticipating an exposure draft in the second quarter of 2022.
Great. And also, can you just talk a little bit about the reception to the name change, the ACFR?
It was overwhelmingly positive, especially from our larger organizations, all very supportive. We actually had a video that we recorded that had five different stakeholder organizations' leaders participate in kind of a, not a campaign, but an educational video about the reasons for the name change. So everybody was real supportive of it, so we were really encouraged by that support.
That's great. Thank you. Any additional questions or comments for Joel before we move on? No? Thank you, Joel. Appreciate it. So again, I'm glad that Robert Scott can be with us virtually to give his final report as the GASAC Chair. Of course, it gives us another opportunity to thank him for his many years of service and commitment to the mission of the organization. Robert, do you want to report on GASAC's activities? mission of the organization. Robert, do you want to report on GASS Act activities?
Certainly. Thank you, Kathy. And my report begins on Master Page 119 of your materials covering the third quarter. The GASS Act did meet on August 9th and 10th. And virtually, we had good participation, as is typical for the council, and appreciate that trustees Lillard and Foster were able to observe the meeting along with other, a number of other guests. The first day or the first afternoon of the meeting took place, we had a pre-agenda research roundtable regard, relative to the post-implementation review of the GASB's pension standards, to provide feedback formally to the staff and the board on the PIR for those important standards. We also discussed a number of technical agenda topics and provided feedback. The first was with a number of exposure drafts, as Joel alluded to and covered in his report, and other due process documents. The first topic was on compensated absences, where we discussed various issues that the project staff brought as part of the board's redeliberations and provided feedback on those issues. The second was the Risk and Uncertainties disclosures, where we had the opportunity to discuss tentative decisions to date as that project moves along, and provided feedback relative to certain category descriptions, objectives, conditions or limitations, and the level of detail of the disclosures, which might ultimately be included in that, in that project. We also were able to provide feedback on pre-agenda research on non-financial assets, primarily whether a practice issue project should be added, and if the board does decide which issue should be addressed. Be the opportunity to provide feedback on two of the big three projects, the conceptual framework recognition financial reporting model, specifically related to the board's tentative decisions to retain the short-term perspective for governmental fund financials. And then, secondly, the revenue and expense recognition model, discussing feedback from stakeholders that resulted from the preliminary views document, and the tentative decisions resulting from the board's conversations resulting after the preliminary views. Comment period was closed. Lastly, and Joel alluded to this in his remarks, we always have an opportunity on the GASS Act agenda to inquire of the council as to emerging practice issues that might require the board's attention. And the primary issues, again, related to pandemic, accounting, American Rescue Plan Act, and timing of revenue recognition. From an administrative standpoint, as the FASAC did, we solicited nominations and renominations to submit to the trustees. And thank you for your approval of those, subject to the completion of the background check and final vetting. Appreciate getting, we're going to have, I believe, six new council members once we're all said and done. In the next meeting, final meeting of this year for the GASS Act is going to be held December 13th and 14th. Fortunately, we're not going to be able to hold in person. I wish I could be with you today, but we will be doing the GASS Act meeting via video conference, and we'd welcome your participation. And as Kathy alluded to, that meeting will be my final meeting as the GASS Act Chair. And in closing on my report, I wish to share some closing sentiments. I'm very proud of the collegial relationships that we have forged between the council, the board, and the GASB staff during my time as Chair. And in particular, we've expanded and encouraged the GASS Act members to provide their input to the standard settings process. Personally, I'm going to miss the camaraderie and relationships with some very highly committed, extremely intelligent, and very pleasant people from all over the U.S. who are committed to work to improve financial reporting for state and local governments. And thank you to the trustees, the GASS Act members over the years, the GASB board and staff for their support. It's been a pleasure to serve in this role. I'd be happy to take your questions you may have.
Thank you, Robert. Are there questions for Robert? No? Robert, thank you very much again. I know we've had the chance in the past to thank you more properly, but you provided tremendous leadership, and you will be missed. But we hope that we will get to see you around in the broader community of former GASS Act members. So thank you again, Robert, for your service. Our next item is a report from the Oversight Committee, and we'll look to Eloise Foster and Tim Ryan to report.
Great. Thanks, Kathy, and good afternoon or good morning, everybody. It's good to be with you. It's Tim Ryan here. I'll cover three elements before I turn over Eloise. As an Oversight Board, we had our meeting, and we covered a couple of topics as it relates to the FASB. I'll give an update on the FASAC Advisory Council, FASB update, and then the PCC update. Overall, a theme of the trustees over the last year has been making sure that all elements are getting the right amount of outreach and stakeholder feedback, including investors. So that's been on our mind, peeking around the corner, thinking forward around what the more important issues are and the right level of resources. And those themes have been consistent in our interactions with the different bodies. As it relates to the Advisory Council, we met with Mike Morrow, and he gave this as annual update of being the FASAC Chair. We covered many items that Mike went through early in his report. Mike gave us an indication of how he's been managing such a large group virtually over the past two years. He talked about how he's trying to engage not only preparers, but also investors, and some of the things he just shared a couple of minutes ago, again, with the theme of wanting to make sure we get everybody's input and they're factored in. He talked about the techniques that he's using to do that. We asked about Mike's relationship with the FASB board, and he shared that that is a very strong and good working relationship and constructive in terms of the feedback Mike is providing on behalf of the council. Mike covered some of the key topics, including disaggregation that he had just talked about. And he also talked about the views and input they're giving on agenda consultation, which is clearly a big item, which I'll talk about in a second. So we felt very good about the relationship. We felt very good about with the board, and we also felt very good about the deliberate attempts to make sure feedback is coming across the board from many different stakeholders, and that it's being reacted. Mike also gave an indication that ESG is a topic that many are raising on the committee, and many of the committee members are raising as well. And again, that will influence how we think about agenda consultation going forward. So that's my update there on the Advisor Council. What I'll do, Kathy, is I'll get through all of them together, and then we can pause for questions if need be. But what I'll do now, and by the way, I do want to congratulate Mike. I know several have already. And Mike, thank you for being willing to do another two years. We also got our update from Rich Jones, the Chair of the FASB. He covered many of the topics that he just went through. So we talked about PIR. We talked about the current agenda. We talked about agenda consultation. We asked Rich just how he is working with the board as we go into the next phase of agenda consultation. We talked about balancing the need to be thoughtful and fully considered over the 500 comments, but also to make sure we are responsive to the pace that the world is moving today and timeliness. And we talked about making sure we have the right balance. We also talked about, we asked Rich about just the level of resourcing to make sure the agenda consultation process is done thoughtfully and has the right amount of timeliness brought into that process. We also discussed, and it came through in the Q and A earlier in this session, and also Rich had shared in his report, as we peek around the corner, the booking come minimum and tax is something that we have our eyes on, especially when we think about the theme of FAF and FASB independence and independent standard setting, and the risks that we talked about in relation to the question that was just asked earlier from that perspective. Lastly, we did talk about some of the themes coming through, agenda consultation, whether it be ESG, digital assets. And we got some early thinking around how Rich and the board are thinking about that as well. But all told, when we think about the update, clearly tremendous efforts to get all types of feedback, again, a big theme of the trustees this year. We got some good color around what I call the healthy friction as people are going through it. And that's important as you go through this process, because thoughtful standard setting does require times, healthy friction, and we're comfortable as an Oversight Committee that that exists as people go through their debates. And we felt good about that. We, lastly, we did hear from Rich and Hillary about just the FASB's initiatives to improve their own internal processes as well. Lastly, we did hear from Sue Cosper on PCC matters and the Private Company Council. And we specifically asked them the role they play, if any, in agenda consultation. And we also got an update on their September PCC meeting, which I know Rick had observed. And Rick, it might be a good time for me to give you a chance to give some of your observations from observing that meeting.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, members, it was a great meeting. There is a lot of collaboration between the FASB members and the PCC members, and they don't hold back, which is great. I know there's some new PCC members that are very much engaged, and that's always what we want. So I'd just say that it's working as we hope it would. And there's a lot of good, good ideas coming out of that group. So any questions, I'd certainly field them. But they, the process works.
Thank you, Rick, very much. So Kathy, what I'll do is turn it over to Eloise, and then questions after that, that'd be great. So Eloise, I pass it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim, and good morning, everyone. During Chair Black's quarterly report to the committee, he provided an update on the status of GASB's agenda projects, and he summarized some of the substantive redeliberations that the GASB had in the third quarter, first on the financial reporting model, and second on the revenue and expense recognition projects. He talked about stakeholder interactions on GASB's PIR projects. And as mentioned earlier, he also provided some comments about the online stakeholder feedback. Finally, Joel spent some time talking about what the GASB is hearing from smaller governments that are receiving funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. At each oversight meeting, the committee, basically, we discuss the advisory groups and the FASB and the GASB board meetings that committee members have had an opportunity to attend in the past quarter. And as Rick just mentioned, he reported at yesterday's meeting about the September PCC meeting. We also heard from Mary, and Mary reported on her observations of a FASB meeting with 60 academic leaders from across the country, and their discussion focused on encouraging academic research on the standard-setting process. At this forum, we basically like to take the opportunity to hear from other trustees who have observed a meeting. And I know Chris, Tim Kristin observed a GASB meeting, and Lynette, you observed a FASB meeting. So beginning with Tim, would you like to share your observations?
Sure thing. I attended a GASB meeting, I observed the GASB meeting August 30th. And to paraphrase Rick Reisig, the system is working as proposed. I thought it was very fair and inclusive in terms of the meeting. There were two topics. It was ACFER, which was discussed at a little bit of length today, and recognition and measurement of compensated absences. And just a couple of very brief general comments, the board members were very well-prepared. I was impressed by that, thoughtful, fully engaged. I was especially impressed by the respect for public comments that had been received on what might seem like obvious matters, but yet everything was very carefully considered. And on one of the measures, there was actually a differing opinion among board members. So it was a chance to see really how professionally that was resolved and how well-done. So I thought it was really well-run by Chairman Black, well-done. It was great to observe, and very good.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Lynette, would you like to say a few words about the FASB meeting?
Sure. Thanks, Eloise. I observed the FASB meeting from October 13th, and the topic was credit loss disclosure issues. Similar takeaways, really, from Tim, incredible preparedness on the part of the staff. There was very significant stakeholder feedback, including a lot of conversations with the FASB members and stakeholders themselves, not just relying on staff for that feedback. Very respectful conversation, but clearly five independent viewpoints from the FASB board. I was very pleasantly surprised that there was a lot of discussion around mechanics and the operability of the proposals, and how the users will digest and use this information in their own analyses. So very impressive. And as everyone has said, the system seems to be working.
So thank you, Tim. Thank you, Lynette. Madam Chair, that concludes the report of the Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Eloise and Tim. Are there any comments or questions for Tim or Eloise? If not, we will move on to a report from our Executive Director, John Auchinklaus. John?
Thank you, Kathy, and good morning to everybody. As everyone in the room and watching this videocast is aware, we are meeting in person. And I'll note that it's the first time our trustees have been able to do that since February of 2020. And it's a happy occasion. I'll also note that we reopened our offices to staff in both in Norwalk and Washington back on October 11th. And we instituted a new flexible workplace policy, which we believe has been well-received. Our new policy has most employees working remotely one or two days a week. Of course, we're going to be watching very carefully how this works in practice, and we will continue to make adjustments and be flexible going forward. I should say that as of now, we have not yet made any decisions as to when and how we will reopen our offices to outside visitors. We expect we will be working on that in the near future. I'd like to say a word about our content vision and enablement project, which we've spoken about in the past. This is our critical project to put our publication system on a robust technology platform. And we hope that that will allow us to continue to adapt, both to our needs going forward, to adapt to future technology changes, and to enable us to be on a platform that is not subject to potential obsolescence. I'm happy to report, we are at the midpoint of our final implementation phase. We are on time and on budget, and we now expect to complete this project in the second quarter of next year. We are pleased to be closing out a successful second year of an initial three-year diversity, equity, and inclusion strategy. And we will be giving a more detailed report to our Board of Trustees later this afternoon. Highlights of the past year include very active discussion and consultation on a part of our internal DEI committee, which is strongly led by GASB Chair Joel Black. I'd like to note that in the past year, we believe we've widened our recruitment pools, which have led to some meaningful changes. 25% of our staff hires being racially diverse, our recent hires, 18% of postgraduate technical assistant hires being racially diverse. And importantly, we've expanded our talent pipeline that currently has over 375 names, of which 40% are female and 18% are racially diverse. We also have continued to support the Board of Trustees Appointments Committee in developing a diverse slate of FAF trustee finalists. Lastly, I'd like to say a couple of words about our 2022 budget, which was approved this morning by the FAF Board of Trustees. Our 2022 budget will include a substantial increase in our operating and capital expenses, which the total budget will be in the territory of $96.6 million. And that does represent a 42% increase from our 2021 budget. The primary driver for this increase is really capital expenditures relating to two things, our plan to move to new space in 2022, and our ongoing CVNE initiative that I just spoke about. These are unusual, but very important projects for our organization. Our current lease expires in September of 2022. We've determined that the space in which we find ourselves today, which we have occupied for more than 30 years, is not going to meet our future requirements with respect to a technology backbone and design parameters necessary to operate efficiently in a hybrid and flexible working environment, while still allowing us to host large meetings with our advisory groups and stakeholders. We have identified office space that is close to our current location that we believe will allow us to meet these needs. It will require a significant build-out, however. We have, we are in the process of negotiating agreements relating to this space, and we expect that our future landlord, if we can reach, if we conclude those agreements, is going to offer us substantial tenant improvement allowances. However, even after those allowances, our costs will remain significant. The portions of our total budgeted expenses The portions of our total budgeted expenses that will constitute recoverable expenses for purposes of calculating accounting support fees after voluntary contributions from the FAF will be $41.1 million for the FASB, which represents a 31% increase, and $12.5 million for the GASB, which is a 17% increase. These are substantial increases, but I do want to note that the FAF is taking significant steps to mitigate. So in addition to the voluntary contribution we make from our publication revenues, which is, we have done consistently on an annual basis, the FAF is proposing to fund a portion of these capital costs from our reserve fund. For 2022, that will lead to a total reduction in our accounting support fees in the amount of $24.3 million. And stakeholders can find on the FAF's website an explanation depicting the factors that affect our reserve funds and the calculation of our accounting support fees. The next step on our budget will be to send the approved budget to the SEC for its review of the FASB accounting support fee to ensure it's consistent with Section 109 of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act, and we are hopeful that that will lead to an order in the new year approving those fees for collection in 2022. So with that, Madam Chair, I conclude my report, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, John. Are there any additional questions for John on his report? No? Thank you again, John. Appreciate that. Our final report is from our Treasurer, Eloise Foster, on our financials. Eloise?
Thank you, Kathy. Today's report is an update on the FAF's financial status for the nine months ending September 30th, 2021. The net assets of the FAF have grown by over $15 million during the first three quarters of this year. This increase acknowledges that all accounting support fees were recognized at the beginning of the year. The $3.2 million in savings represents lower travel and meeting expenses related to COVID-19, lower salary and benefit costs due to open positions, and a reduction in relocation and other operating expenses. These savings were offset by unfavorable variance in investment income of $596,000 due to market conditions. Position headcount for the organization is seven below budget. Overall, I'm really happy to report that at the close of the third quarter of 2021, the FAF is really in good shape, and our balance sheet still remains strong. So Madam Chair, that concludes the Treasurer's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eloise. So before we conclude our session today, I'd like to recognize the three trustees who are retiring from the FAF board. They all began their five-year terms in January of 2017, and their tenures will conclude on December 31, 2021. We had the opportunity last night at our gathering to present each of them with a framed picture, acknowledging their service, and also share a few comments about our experiences and working with them. So I just want to take a moment again to say how nice it has been able, that we have been able to express the sincere appreciation of everyone at the FAF for your service and to be able to do so in person, which is wonderful. Sue Carter, who served as Chair of the Compensation Committee and a member of both the Executive Committee and the Audit and Finance Committee, greatly appreciate your leadership, significant contributions. So thank you, Sue. Tony Dowd, who served as Chair of the Appointments Committee and as a member of the Executive Committee and the Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. I think many of us know the heavy lift it takes to chair the Appointments Committee in particular, so your leadership there has been greatly, greatly valued, and you will leave an important legacy on improvements to that process. So thank you, Tony. Eloise Foster, who served as co-chair of the Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee, Secretary and Treasurer of the Board as both a member of the Executive Committee and the Appointments Committee. Eloise, you'd never know, you had a full-time job, you commit so much to this organization, always willing to take on new responsibilities. You will also be greatly missed, so we thank you as well. And I just want to offer a round of applause for all of our trustees. So on behalf of the FAF, I want to thank everybody for joining us today. This ends the public session of our meeting. I'd note that our next meeting is the Tuesday, February 15th, and we hope that you will be able to join us again. So with that, I want to thank you and wish you all a good day.